Okay, thank you all for being here. I'm gonna go ahead and call this session of the City of Ocean Shores Hearing Examiner to order. For the record, today is April twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four at ten AM. We have three items on the agenda today, starting with number SVAR twenty-three dash oh oh three. A request for approval of a shoreline variance or SVAR. To allow for the development of a recreational vehicle driveways in a gravel picnic area. And I believe for the potential future development of a single-family residence, but we'll address that later. On an approximately zero point two one acre lot, which is located in the shoreline jurisdiction at seven seven six Mariner Court Southeast. Specifically, the applicant is requesting the SVAR to allow for the proposed development to encroach. Within the fifty-foot shoreline setback and within a protected buffer area associated with a category one wetland. Located at the northern edge of the property. My name is Peregrin Sorter. I'm a hearing examiner with Lamner Law. Whom the city has selected to hold certain land use hearings like this one. And it will be my role today to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony. To determine whether the proposal complies with the city comprehensive plan. Zoning ordinances, the State Shoreline Management Act. The City Shoreline Master Program and the specific criteria for approval of a shoreline variance. To that end, I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of the hearing. These include the staff report prepared by city staff. The application and project plans. Documents related to an environmental review of the proposal. A biological assessment and habitat management plan prepared by convergent ecosystems. A comment from the Washington State Department of Ecology. And various notice materials, and I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone else have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify. And I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, all testimony today will be under oath or affirmation because were my decision to be appealed. The recording of today's hearing along with the admitted exhibits and my written decision would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may ask questions of those who are testifying today. I assure you I am not trying to trip anyone up. I am just trying to make sure that I have a clear understanding of the proposal. So that after the record closes, I am able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. The order that we typically follow, and I believe we will be following today, is first we will hear from city staff. Who will provide an overview of the proposal along with any recommendations that the city may have. Following that, we will hear from the applicant and see if there's any additional information they feel that myself or members of the public. Should be aware of in advance of my decision being issued. After that, members of the public will have an opportunity to testify and finally, following any public testimony. We will turn back to the applicant and the city as necessary for any response. And I think with that, we can get started. Who do we have on behalf of the city today?
Uh, Marshall Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Let's go ahead and get you sworn in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you please spell your name for the audio recording and explain your role with the city?
Yeah, good morning. My name is Marshall Reed. M A R S H A L L. Last name is Reed, R E. And I serve as the city planner and shoreline administrator for the City Ocean Shores.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Did my summary of the exhibits track with what you were hoping I'd review in advance of this hearing?
Uh, it did.
Thank you. You may proceed with your presentation.
Okay, so I'd like to start out, um, it's. The, uh, the staff report on this was based off of a template for another project and is. In its entirety representative of the project, um, the. And their biologists have, uh, done an outstanding job in outlining. The, the requirements and the. That they're taking to meet the requirements and comply with. Uh, comments from the ecology, um, through the entire project. Um, again, this project in, in works for, I think we're going on a year and a half now. And what it has evolved to is the sighting of a single-family resi- On a bayfront shoreline. Wherein they're asking from the strict, um. Application of foot wetland buffer and for the fifty-foot setback of the Grace Harbor estuary and buffer. And so, um, to start out, the applicant is Enrique and. Enrique Estrada Terry, Susanna Terry. Um, from Tacoma, Washington. The project, uh, location is in Division twenty-one. Block one, block forty-five. Located at seven seventy-six Mariner Court Southeast. Um, the parcel is a nine thousand three hundred seventy-one square foot parcel. Uh, zoned R one for single family. Uh, existing conditions, uh, land use is for single-family. Uh, the zoning, um, around this R one. Is a saltwater lagoon to the south is an R one, single-family residence. To the east is a publical, uh, shown as a bay access. And to the west is an R one, single-family. It designation to the north is, um, in the saltwater lagoon is single-family to this family. Um, to the east, public recreational and to the west, single-family. Existing land use surrounding this property is a saltwater lagoon. Uh, to the north, to the south, it's developed, to the east is public recreational, mostly undeveloped. And to the west is a single-family residence, um, developed. Um, the property is in the southeast quadrant of the City of Ocean Shores, surrounded by a single-family occupant. This, um, notice was given, uh, for this variance request. Uh, for today's date, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, uh, sent out to, uh. Property owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, um, to comply with. Longer thirty-day, um, notice requirements of a shoreline permit. The analysis on this, um, the applicant's biologist has. A full delineation of the property and came up with recommendations. Uh, for mitigating impacts to the shoreline and wetland buffer that are, that are proposed by this. Um, in the standard of review for variances. Examiner would have the authority to grant a variance from provisions of this title subject to the following provisions. Any variance granted shall not, uh, constitute a grant of. Uh, special privilege inconsistent with the limitation on other properties in the vicinity and zone which is that are located. Um, also the criteria for consideration, uh. Because of special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or in this case, critical areas. Um, the strict application of this type. Um, in the shoreline master program would deprive the subject property of certain rights and privileges enjoyed by other vicinity. Um, and also, we are to determine that the. Granting of the variance would not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest of property or in the vicinity or zone. Should the hearing examiner approve this variance, the planning department would, um, conditions. And the conditions listed are not representative of what would apply. Other project, um, the conditions that would apply to this project specifically would be that, um, for mitigating. Any impacts to the environmentally sensitive areas around the project would be, um. Be mitigated for in compliance with, um, the standards set forth by our shoreline master program and, um. With, also with, um, comments from the ecology. And so that's, uh, that's kind of a, in a nutshell, what we've got. Um, I apologize for the, um, for the, uh. Friends in the staff report on this, um. We had a template get, I didn't pick it up on the, on the front end, so, uh, my apologies.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reed. Yeah, that, that did confuse me when I was going through the staff report, so. I guess to begin with, I just, I want to be clear about what it is I am reviewing here today. And about my authority in relation to that review, so. To be clear, the, the request before me is for a shoreline variance. To provide relief from certain shoreline setback and buffer area requirements of the city SMP. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
And then, um. Looking through the materials I have, it appears that, uh. A shoreline substantial development permit or SSDP would also be required for this proposal? Is, is, is that your understanding?
It, it would, and, and those are, those would be provided administratively, um. That you as the hearing examiner and the Department of Ecology grant the variance.
So that's, that's something, has the applicant filed for their SSDP? I'm just curious.
Not as of yet.
Okay, and then, um. I, I think I recall, as I was looking through the city SMP that, uh. Generally, that requires the applicant to also submit their materials for. The SSDP, but we, maybe you can take a look at that, um. I have some other, some, some other concerns, um, so. The, the materials I saw. Talks about, um, development of RV driveways, but then. Also talks about attention, potential future development of a. Single-family residence. Can you clarify what the proposed development is here?
Yeah, they, so originally the development came in as an RV site. And because it's more difficult for the Department of Ecology to. Prove a variance for recreational use, the, the project has evolved to a, a small, a small footprint, single-family residential development. Um, which, um. Process, we've reduced the footprint of the overall proposal, um, to minimize impacts, um. Based on ecology's comments. So we are now looking at a, uh, at a smaller footprint with a single-family rent of the proposal.
Yeah, and I, I brought that up not only because I was a little confused from the materials about what the proposed development was. But I think they mentioned, um. You know, within five years, I just want to, you know, point out that. The city SMP as well as the, uh, RCW ninety fifty-eight, one forty-three. And the WAX or Washington Administrative Code provisions. Uh, require that instruction activities, um, associated with an authorized shoreline variance permit must commence. Within two years generally, so I just wanted to make sure that. You know, were I to approve this, the applicant understands that there are certain time limits for acting on the permit. But we can, I can, I can discuss that with the applicant when it's there, when they have an opportunity to, uh, testify, um. So, um, and I wanted to bring this up as well, um. There, there appears to be a conflict between the municipal code and the city SMP. And that the municipal code states that, um, the hearing examiner provides recommendations to the city council on shoreline permit applications. Whereas the, um, city SMP states that the decision of the hearing examiner. On these sorts of applications are final, um. I believe that the city SMP would control, but is that something you can weigh in on or? Does the city attorney need to be consulted on my authority here?
Um, I, I believe that the shoreline master program. And currently adopted superseded anything in the, um, in the Ocean Shores Municipal Code. As it, as it would pertain to a shoreline variance.
Okay, and then, um. You're aware that the Department of Ecology ultimately has the final permit authority on shoreline variances? Mister.
That is understood.
Okay, um, have you had a chance to review the comment that was provided by, uh, ecology?
Uh, I did, I. In contact with, um, their representative Zach Myers through the, through the majority of this process, that's how the revisions, uh, took place from. That, that basically caused. Evolved from an RV or recreational type site to a single-family residence. And then we also downstarted, moved it closer to the road to minimize its impacts. All that was done with consultation from the. Ecology.
Okay, so, uh, with that in mind, I guess, let's turn to the. Subject property and, um, the project plans. Um, I see that, uh, Ms. Baker, the applicant's expert is here. Um, I'm thinking we can get her sworn in, so she's available to provide any clarification on my next set of questions. Ms. Baker, can you go ahead and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you please state and spell your name for the record and explain your role with the project?
Uh, my name is Rosemary Baker. R O S E M A R Y, last name B A K E R. I, my company is Convergent Ecosystems, and I am the applicant's wetland biologist. And consultant, and I prepared the critical areas plan, uh. Uh, in preparation for the shoreline variance.
Great, thank you. So I am, um. Just kind of pull up the site plan here. What I have, uh. Is in my packet at. What, what's the fifth page in my packet, which I believe has, uh. Kind of the footprint of the proposed, uh, single-family residence on there.
Yes.
Do you have that available?
Yes, I have it open.
And then I'm thinking maybe either Mr. Reed or Ms. Baker, if you can kind of just. Walk me through what's depicted here on this site plan. I think that would be helpful.
Hmm. Uh, the original, uh, proposal as, uh, Marshall Reed mentioned had been a recreational use, so there were originally, uh. It was a design that showed a, a campsite, uh, pad as well as two driveways, um. This most recent proposal and site plan that was submitted, which is what I hope you have. Um, should be dated November three, two thousand and twenty-three at the lower left-hand corner.
I, I have an earlier date of. Uh, looks like May twenty-fifth.
That's, I think that's where some of the confusion is, is coming. Um, you were past perhaps an older version. Um, so the updated site plan actually does show a, um. Seventeen hundred sixty square foot home, which is very modest relative to the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, and the adjoining properties with a, um. Two-car, uh, uh, garage from Mariner Court Southeast on the south side. And, um, we have provided just a very minimal. Front side and backyard, uh, which would constitute a reasonable use for single-family, uh, residents. Um, the backyard is fifteen feet, um, to the north of the house, side yard to the west is ten feet. And there's a, um. To a small twenty-foot, uh, lawn in the front adjacent to the, to the driveway, um. Now, is it, is it helpful to walk through this if you do not have, if we do not have the same?
I. I don't know how helpful that is. I, Mr. Reed, is there, do you know if there's anywhere in this exhibit packet? Uh, the, the most current site plan? It's, it's a little bit difficult for me to evaluate this proposal, uh, on the information I've been given. I can tell you that it's. Kind of a struggle.
Hmm.
Uh.
So the, the page, I show it on the, um. The fifth page as a, as a mostly current, um, proposal, uh, it was hand-drawn. The lower left date of that drawing. Was shown, do you have the one that is shown as figure six, uh, Peregrin?
It, it says figure six, um. You know, what, what I'm looking at depicts two driveways. A gravel picnic area and, uh, a hand-drawn, it looks like, footprint of a single-family residence. Uh.
So, so that. That is almost accurate, um, with the exception that the drawing that you're looking at shows a gravel pit. An RV driveway one and an RV driveway two. Those have all been eliminated.
What about the, um, the sighting of the, the house? Has that been moved closer to the right of way?
It was moved as close as.
We moved that to within the, we moved that all the way to the, um, to the front yard setback. Beat, which is shown on the drawing that you're looking at, I believe. We show, uh. Uh, to the. Would be, I believe, to the north of the house. Uh, of, uh, defensible space and fifteen feet to the rear of the house as. Defensible space. And those limits that are shown on the drawing app would be the, would be the limits, um, of impact.
So I guess my question is, does this, the. On what I'm looking at, I see a split rail protective fence. Is that still the project area? Is that the area that is going to be disturbed as the project is currently proposed? So it still protrudes. Into the vegetative shoreline setback to the north? Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
And then, um. So these, the, the RV driveways aren't there, but that's still an area that would be impacted. Under the revised.
Those will be impacted, but with the previous surface.
Okay. Um, let me see here, um. And then, so. Think we've established the, okay, Ms. Baker.
Uh, your honor, in the newest version, uh, that was updated per ecology's comments, per the city's negotiation with us as well. Um. In, unfortunately, you're not, uh, having it in front of your screen. I have it in front of mine. We did resubmit this, um. In, in November of last year, two thousand and twenty-three. So, um, I, I'm not clear if that made it through to you. Uh, we, we did not know that you did not, that you did not have it, but at least in our version, just to say that. That, that small section of the, uh, shoreline setback that the backyard protrudes into. Again, this is a very modest backyard, um. We compensated on-site for doing a buffer averaging. And provided some, um, set, set aside or setback area along the east side of the property. Uh, in exchange for that, so we, we did.
That blue kind of hatched area?
Correct. We, we did try on-site to, to address that, that buffer impact.
And then, can you tell me if the, the city and the applicant, did they consider? Uh, a request for a zoning variance from the front setback to, to avoid. Portraying into that buffer or vegetative buffer area?
We, we did consider that, but this property is on a turn. Coming drain right off of a main thoroughfare and. Push the house out would put, um, vehicles coming in with trailers or towing trailers or whatever, uh. Closer to the roadway out in the right of way, uh, than what I was comfortable with. The discussions with ecology, he found that a reasonable, um. Uh, reason to the front yard variance, uh, setback variance. And so. Into the minimum of twenty feet.
We have, is there any documentations of your, uh, communications with DOE?
Um, I have emails that, um, that went back and forth regarding the discussion on the front yard variance potential. Some of the buffer averaging that was, uh, implemented to offset the imp. In the, in the shoreline setback.
And that, that would also, I think, be helpful in my review because. You know, I want to make sure that DOE's concerns were, were addressed in, in the city's review of this project. And I, I, I couldn't tell that from the materials I've been given at all.
No, I, I, I gathered that and I apologize for, um. For the lack of clarity in the proposal, um, that's not on the applicant, that's on the planning. I'll accept that. I will, I will endeavor to forward any materials. Be necessary to offer the clarification necessary, um, for you to make a proper decision.
And then, it, that would be great, Mr. Reed. I do have some concerns. I'm gonna have to think, think this through because the. The, the public also hasn't had an opportunity to, to review those materials prior to this hearing, so, um. Well, we'll circle back to that. So, uh, looking at the site plan that I have, though, I, it's, it's also my understanding that. There's this, uh, it's a category one wetland. That, uh, kind of is mostly located off-site to the north, but protrudes. Right here into the, the northern portion of the, uh, the site, is that correct? And Ms. Baker, you determined that that has a, uh, standard three hundred foot buffer? And the, does that extend over the entire property here?
Um, it does, your honor.
Great, thank you. Um, and then you mentioned, um. That the applicant proposes buffer averaging for the reduced. Shoreline vegetative, uh, setback. And then as far as mitigation for impacts to the buffer area, what is, what is proposed there?
Um, yes, we included in our, in our, uh, mitigation proposal. Uh, purchase of credits at the Weatherwax mitigation bank. Um, now that was a year ago, so we do understand that the, uh, the bank has, um, reduced amounts left and. Um, is having to acquire some additional credits, uh, credit options to kind of refill the bank at this time, so. Um, whatever, um, process remains in terms of. Being able to use weatherwax as a mitigation option, we will, um. You know, work with the city on that and, um. Uh, but that was, that was, it's basically off-site mitigation was proposed for, for what else, what else we could not do on site.
And then, uh, Mr. Reed, did you want to speak to that at all?
Yeah, uh, this project has been in the works, um. This was one of our first, um, shoreline. Projects with, uh, wetland mitigation incorporated into it. And, um, because the project was moving, um, with progress at a reasonable level, um, I knew that, that we would end up. At some point, and so I've reserved enough credits to, um. To, uh, provide this applicant, um, should we get through the hearing to be able to offset any, uh. Acts authorized.
Thank you. And then, um. Ms. Baker, I, I, I read through your thorough report, um. But maybe for members of the public, can you just briefly describe the existing conditions at this site?
Certainly, uh, currently this is an undeveloped, fully vegetated, uh, kind of dune land, ha- dune land habitat, which is, uh, a type that it's. Kind of a, it's a mix of, uh, dune grasses as well as shrubs, as well as some maturing small trees in the south, um, south half of the property, um. The vegetation is just a, it's a bit of a, a patchwork, um, between young alders. Uh, Sitka spruce and, um, European beech grass, American dune grass, uh. And then right at the edge of the shoreline, actually, there is a fair amount of kind of, um, low shrubs, evergreen huckleberry and Himalayan blackberry right along the shoreline.
Thank you. And then, um. The. You, can you remind me what the total, um. Estimated impacts to the existing buffer area, what that would be?
Um, our impacts.
I have forty, uh, four thousand two hundred ninety-three on this site plan. That, that remains the same.
That is the same on ours as well, forty-two ninety-three between the house. That is the same on ours as well, forty-two ninety-three between the house, driveway and small yard areas.
Great, um. Thank you, Mr. Reed, Ms. Baker. I don't have any additional questions for the city or Ms. Baker at this time. Uh, Mr. Reed, are there any other members of city staff that are going to be testifying on this first matter? And Ms. Baker, do you have any additional testimony that you'd like to provide at this time?
Uh, no, we do not, uh, Your Honor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and it looks like we have the applicant here. With the, I see a. Susanna Terry labeled on one of our participants. If you can go ahead and unmute. Who, who do we have on, on behalf of the applicant?
Enrique Estrada.
Hello, Mr. Estrada, um. Can you go ahead and, uh, let's get you sworn in if you can raise your right hand? Do you, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony that you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you go ahead and spell your name for the record?
Enrique Estrada, E N R I Q U E. E S D R A D A.
Thank you. And, um, so you've heard some of the concerns that I raised here today. Um, this is your opportunity to present any additional information about the proposal that you'd like me or members of the public to know.
Yes, I, I, uh, this is my first time on Zoom, so this, this is all new to me. Uh, Ms. Rosemary and, uh. And Marshall, they, they've been really helpful on, uh, taking us, uh, through this journey. So we're trying to comply with everything they have told us that is the right thing to do.
Thank you. And then, um, uh, you understand that, and I haven't made any decisions on this, but. That if I was to approve your application. Um, you cannot begin any construction activities until you obtain final permit authority from the, uh, Department of Ecology.
Yes, that's correct.
I just want to make sure, um, that you know that. Um, and then, um. Mr. Reed kind of recited what the city's recommendations were going to be in this matter. Did you? Uh, have a chance to hear what Mr. Reed said?
Yes, we, we even talking, uh, on and off and emailing back and forth for over a year now. And, but I do have more questions once, once it comes into, in the future and we get to move forward. There, there'll be more, more questions.
Would, would you have any issue complying with, uh, the, the city's recommended conditions or any additional conditions I may impose? Were I to approve this? And again, I haven't made a decision on that.
Not at all.
Okay. Thank you. Anything, anything else before we turn to, uh, members of the public?
Uh, thank you all for your time.
Thank you for being here. Uh, Mr. Reed, do we have anyone in the room that wishes to testify on this first matter?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Thank you. So I'm gonna go, I'm gonna turn to, uh, the participants I see here on Zoom. I see. Ms. Pierre is here. Ms. Pierre, are you wishing to testify on this first matter?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Uh. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in any testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you. And can you go ahead and state and spell your name for the audio recording?
Yes, my name is Vida Piera, and that's spelled V, like in Victor. I, D, A, P, like Papa, I, E, R, A.
Thank you, Ms. Pierre. You, you may go ahead and, uh, provide any comments that you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Sorter, and I also am an Ocean Shore resident. I have several concerns about this project variance, including zoning, public use. Cumulative effects and project submittals. I would also respectfully request that Your Honor extend the comment period to allow the public to view a complete. amended project application packet. First, I want to talk about zoning. The subject parcel's current zoning according to the, uh, Grace Harbor Assessors Office is. PR two, which is public recreational. And R one, single family. So it, it holds dual zoning. The subject parcel abuts property to the east, known as Track D, which is owned by the city. Track D contains a freshwater estuary and is commonly known as the lagoon. And it too is zoned PR two, public recreational. The PR two zoning designation is reserved for public property. The fact that the subject property carries both a residential R one use and a public. Recreational PR two zoning designation creates a land use development issue. As the Shoreline Management Act allows, a zoning variance may grant relief. From dimensional or performance standards in the city's twenty twenty-four shoreline master plan. But a variance may not change a property's public recreational shoreline use. There are administrative processes available to correct this conflicting zoning issue. Project documents are silent about the dual zoning. Was there an administrative change to eliminate the PR two? Public recreational zoning designation of the subject parcel? The staff report misstates the subject's stated designated land uses. The correct surrounding land use designations according to the city's land use map are to the north. Freshwater ways known as the lagoons zoned. The land uses public recreational and it's zone PR two. To the east is Track D. Public recreational, also zoned PR two. To the south is public right of way, known as Mariner Court Southeast. And to the west. The designated use is single family zoned R one. The report also admits the fact that the abutting, that abutting the subject property to the east. Is the city's ten foot wide public access to the lagoon and the surrounding public shoreline. This area, which is north of the subject, is public recreational property. Not private residential as stated in the report. The report statement that quote, all surrounding properties are zoned R one also is not true. The variance shoreline and C pla- CIPA applications. Including in the public, included in the public submittal packet. State the current intended use is for RV and recreational purposes. If the intended use has changed from RV recreational to residential. The subject property's land use designation and zoning should match the intended residential use. As a condition of permit issuance, I recommend the subject's R one PR two zoning be changed formally. Through the county assessors office and that the city require amendments. To the twenty twenty-three agency applications to reflect accurate responses that consider the new intended. Residential use. Now I want to talk about shoreline variances, public use and cumulative effects. WAC one seventy-three, twenty-six, two two-one, section four. Shoreline Master Plan General Provisions Public Access. Provides standards to ensure that shoreline modifications do not affr- infringe. Upon public access to the shoreline and requires that both physical and visual shoreline access. Be protected and enhanced. WAC one seventy-three, twenty-seven, one seventy. Friori review for variance permits, specifically section three, three C. Dates quote, that the public rights and use of the shorelines will not be adversely affected, end quote. And in that same reference, section four. It states, quote, in the granting of all variance permits, consideration shall be given to the cumulative impact. Of additional requests for like actions in the area, end quote. And remain consistent with the policies of RCW ninety fifty-eight, O two O. Now I want to talk about the project submittals. Pages two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, and fourteen of the CIPA applications are missing. From the public submittal packet. The missing subject areas include background, environmental elements. Groundwater. Stormwater. Surface water. Energy, environmental health, land and shoreline use, housing. Historical and cultural preservation and transportation. The twenty twenty-three application materials focus on an RV project. And do not address any of the issues associated with residential development. For example, on page five of fifteen of the CIPA checklist. Under the water section, question three, A three asks, quote. Estimate the amount of dredge and fill material that would be placed or removed from surface water or wetlands. It also asks, indicate the area of the site affected and the source of the fill material. These obviously material questions were answered not applicable. Another example is on page seven of fifteen, section four A, referring to plants. The answers on the checklist omit the fact that vegetation consistent with wetlands. Is present on the property as shown in today's record. I also want to talk about the joint aquatic resources permit. Where is the JARPA application? The property's north boundary line abuts a freshwater estuary that is contiguous with waters of the state. This project may require permits from the Army Corps of Engineers. And the Departments of Ecology, Fish and Wildlife, and Natural Resources. The project may also need a four oh one water quality certification. And proof of consistency with the Coastal Zone Management Act, among others. So in conclusion, it's reasonable to say that the public facing application materials for this project are incomplete. I would like the hearings examiner to extend the public comment period. To allow the city to obtain and publicly post. amended project applications to reflect the actual intended residential use of this property. This way, the public may view the complete record and provide more informed comments during this public process. I would also like all parties to use the city's current shoreline master plan document. Effective February twenty twenty-four, to evaluate and condition this project. Since as of today, in my opinion, the applications are technically incomplete and should not be granted vesting rights. I would also like the hearings examiner to ensure the city enforces the current. Twenty nineteen edition of the Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington for this project. The city's municipal code, chapter thirteen seventeen, has not been updated since twenty zero eight. To reflect ecology's most recent version of the manual, the use of which is required by law. Finally, I would like to ask the hearings examiner to ensure the public access, access to the shoreline. Throughout the project's pre and post constructing, construction phases. This location is one of the last public shoreline access points. In the area and it must be maintained and enhanced for current and future public use. If it pleases Your Honor, I can provide the shoreline administrator with a written transcript of my comments. Thank you for your consideration, and that completes my testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Pierre. I was actually gonna ask that. It looked like you were reading from something and, uh, I was wondering if you had that written and you'd be, if you'd be willing to, uh. Submit that for the record.
I would be happy to send it to the shoreline administrator immediately following the meeting.
Thank you. I'll, I'll address that at the conclusion of this hearing, if you can stick around. Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public on Zoom that would like to testify in this matter? Before I turn it back to the city and the applicant to respond to Ms. Pierre's comments. I see a, uh, Frances Taylor, uh, on there. Are you wanting to provide any testimony on this first matter?
Uh, not at this time. I'm, uh, just an interested party.
Thank you. And then I also see a phone number. Um, if someone's, someone's on the phone. If you can indicate whether you'd like to comment on this first matter here today. Do we know, Mr. Reed, who's, who's calling in?
Uh, I, I. Who had called in.
Okay. Well, at this point, uh, we'll turn it back to, uh, the city, I guess, first. Uh, if you'd like to respond to Ms. Pierre's comments.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, Vida. The lot in there and I knew it was coming, um. What I would like to do, um, address those, uh, piece by piece, the, the first part that offers some confusion. That is a split zoned, um. Or a multiple zone parcel, uh. Or shows that, uh, only as an R one with the shoreline designation and the shoreline designation. Um, would only apply to the shoreline itself, not the parcel. Uh, so it was, the project as submitted was, uh, solely in an R one zone. The wetland buffer and the shoreline, um, as outlined in the shoreline master program. Not aware of this other PR two zoning, um, public recreational two is a zone. The city, but it doesn't apply that zone, those zoning, uh, restrictions, uh. So I need to look into that and, and get clarification on that, um.
And if it's helpful, Mr. Reed, I'm gonna propose here, um. Shortly, uh, leaving the record open to, to clarify some things, so, um. I don't know if you, I, I want, I want to give you a chance to respond, uh, orally right now, if you'd like to Ms. Pierre's comments, but I am going to. I guess suggest a method moving forward that is gonna allow you to address those more thoroughly, just, just so you're aware. And the applicant is aware.
I think that's probably the most prudent way to get, uh. Her, uh, points addressed. Um, I don't want to get through. Of it and, and then not be able to fully address all of her concerns.
But if there's anything else you'd like to say, you know, uh, orally in response to Ms. Pierre's comments, you have that opportunity now. But again, I'm go- I'm going to, uh, address some procedures for being able to address those more thoroughly.
Yeah, no, I, I very much appreciate your, um, your thought on. And, and, um, I will endeavor to, uh, get the rest of the Ts crossed and Is. Uh, we can make a decision moving forward.
Okay. And then, did, did the applicant or applicant's expert want to respond at this time? I'm also gonna provide you with an opportunity to, to provide a more thorough. Written response to Ms. Pierre's comments, if you'd like. But is there anything you'd like to state now?
Um, I also would prefer to have her written comments to be able to accurately respond. Um, to questions and concerns in, in her comments. Uh, it's, there were many, so it's kind of hard to, uh, respond in kind right now.
Okay, this is, this is what I'm gonna propose at this time. I'm gonna propose, there, there seems to be some elements missing here from the record, so I am. Going to propose leaving the record open. Um, and here's what specifically I'm looking for, um. I think I need some information on the city's communications with DOE. I think I need some information on the city's communications with DOE regarding revisions to this project. I need the current site plan for the project. A complete CIPA checklist. It looks to me like maybe this was just scanned in, and the backside of the checklist wasn't included, something along those lines. And then also, if it's possible, Mr. Reed, to have a more thorough city staff analysis on this project, given the deficiencies in the staff report, and specifically what the city is recommending, some analysis on how the project complies with the city SMP, including the policies and regulations of the city SMP would be helpful. Do you know about how long that would take you to? And then I'm also going to allow Ms. Pierre to submit her written comments. So any response to those comments? Do you know how long it would take you to provide that information?
Who was that question for, Your Honor?
It's really directed to both the applicant and the city. There's some things that the city, I'm requesting the city provide, and the applicant may also provide. So I can throw out, do you think two weeks would be sufficient? If Ms. Pierre were to submit her comments at the close of this hearing, would two weeks be sufficient?
Certainly.
Mr. Reed?
Very reasonable. Thank you.
And then I am going to leave the record open as well for an additional week. So if all those, all that information can be submitted into the record and be publicly accessible so that Ms. Pierre or any other member of the public can provide additional comments on the updated materials. That's what it would, would the applicant and the city be open to that process moving forward?
So we would leave the record open for an additional two and a week beyond that for public comment?
Yes. So here's what I'm going to suggest, and you can let me know how you feel about that. I would suggest leaving the record open until the close of business, May eighth, for the submission of these additional materials that I'm requesting. And then until May, the close of business, May fifteenth, for any additional public comments. And then I'm going to go ahead and say that if the city or applicant wants to respond to any additional public comments, that they would have until Friday, May seventeenth to do so. Does that sound like a good plan moving forward, Mr. Reed?
Yes, I would love to have that amount of time. That's generous. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we get this right, Ms. Baker. Does that sound like it's workable?
It does if we can be efficient and getting materials, comments, and the transfer of paperwork accurately back and forth, because we've definitely had some challenges here, getting the record clear and for what I updated and what Enrique Estrada and I both worked on, getting that the most updated information and site plan to you. So as long as we're accurately conveying documents, I am good with that timeline.
Yeah, and if you have any issues with those deadlines, you know, just bring them to me, and I would be open to extending those for good cause shown. Great. Do we have, so it looks like we have a plan moving forward. I'm leaving the record open. As I mentioned, the close of business, May eighth, for the submission of the requested additional materials. Ms. Pierre is going to submit her written comments sometime shortly after this hearing, I assume. And then any additional public comments would be due May fifteenth by the close of business. And then any response to those comments would be due May seventeenth by the close of business. Great. And then are there any last thoughts, Mr. Reed, on behalf of the city before I adjourn? We're leaving the record open, but adjourn this first matter?
No, no more comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all for being here. We'll try to get this all sorted out. If there's anyone that's here for, that was here for the first matter, you're welcome to stay. But you can also leave if you have better things to do. We have two more matters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, Mr. Reed, you can just let me know whenever you're ready to proceed with the second matter today. And I believe the second matter is going to be the subdivision CUP.
Yes, CUP twenty-four would be our next matter.
Yeah. So whenever you're ready, I'll do my little intro.
Sean, you want to come up? I'm going to invite the applicant to come up and sit with me.
Sure.
Okay, so would you like, oh, are we swearing in?
I'm going to, I'll do my brief intro. I just wanted to make sure you're ready. Great.
Okay, yeah, ready.
Thank you. So next on the agenda, we have number CUP twenty-four dash zero 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 one, "A Request for Approval of a Conditional Use Permit to Allow for a Two-Unit Common Wall Residential Structure on an Approximately Point Two Acre Lot Located at 221 Marine View Drive Southwest to be subdivided to allow for individual unit ownership." "I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of the hearing. These include the staff report prepared by city staff, the application and project plans, and various notice materials. And I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify, and I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time." With that, Mr. Reed, you're still sworn in, so you can begin your presentation whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. The purpose of this conditional use is for the construction of a two-unit common wall with the ability to subdivide the property for individual. The applicant is Sean Williams of Silverline Building LLC, located at 3 Avenue in Hopeway, Washington. The project located Division Seventeen, Block Twelve, and Lot Thirty-three, the site Twenty-One Marine View Drive Southwest. The existing conditions of the site, this is Zone R Seven or fiveplex. The land use is designation from the and is multifamily medium density. The surrounding conditions in the neighborhood to the north, we have a single family. To the south, B One Retail Commercial, to the multifamily medium density, and to the west, R Seven multifamily medium density. Note, to the south, the B One Retail Commercial is not shown that way on our current zoning map. It's shown as R Seven as well. It was rezoned through a planned unit development project. So those are, those have B One uses to the south of this project. Designation, multifamily to the north, medium density to the south, neighborhood to the east, single family, and to the west, single family. To the north, there's an active construction of a multifamily structure. To the south, we have the planned use development. To the east, a single family structure, and to the west, a The property is located in the southwest corner of Ocean Shores, in a multi-use division surrounded of residential, single-family occupancy uses, multifamily uses, and undeveloped. There are several other multifamily structures and single-family residential structures in the immediate area. R Seven Zone is designated a conditional use for the development of a common wall residential where the underlying land is subdivided to allow individual ownership of the subdivided lot. This is municipal code Title Seventeen, Chapter Seventeen, Twenty-Eight, Oh Three Zero. Notice was sent out for today's hearing to owners within three hundred feet of the subject property on May fourth, twenty twenty-three, according to Ocean Shores Municipal Code Seventeen Fifty-Two Oh Ninety. Staff, the development project is listed as a conditional use in this zoning district, and uses listed call Row House, Other Common Wall Residential Developments, where the underlying land is subdivided ship of the individual lot and home. The subject property is located in an R Seven, and multifamily dwellings are permitted in this zone with a maximum density of one unit for square feet of lot size. Seventeen Twenty-Four Oh Fifty, the density regulations basically weigh that out. Think that the lot size would accommodate this your two-dwelling subdivision. The property contains eighty-eight hundred square feet, and the building could be permitted without the application, but it could not be subdivided without a conditional use permit. The criteria for consideration of a conditional use permit before the conditional use permit, the hearing examiner needs to determine the following, that the use of life for is either listed as a use in the district, or that it is significantly similar. In this case, it is specifically listed, and approval of the permit would be substantially consistent with the purpose and applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan, and would not adversely affect other uses in the immediate vicinity, and that the granting of the permit would not reduce the dimensional requirement history, and also that no nuisance to life limb or property would develop. The life for is specifically listed in the conditional uses, Seventeen Twenty-Eight Oh and Part C of section Row House and Other Common Wall Residential Developments, where the underlying land is subdivided to ownership of the individual lot and home. And because this proposed unit is a building, it is a permitted use under that zone. It's evident on its face that the building will potentially consistent with the purpose of the district, and the applicable provisions of the comprehensive would not adversely affect other properties, whether subdividing the land individual lots would also be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and the comprehensive plan. The district is intended for two-family and multifamily dwellings in order to adequate light, air, open space, privacy, and the protection of other property values while providing housing in the community, where the proposed use would allow for individual units to be sold to home buyers. It appears to be consistent with the purpose of the district. There are examples from the 2014 and the current plan, which indicates we'll use the current policy number eight is to encourage and promote a wide range of residential development types and in various parts of the city to meet the needs of a diverse population and provide for a variety of choices. Again, because the proposed use would allow, would allow for units to be sold to home buyers, the application appears to be consistent with the purpose of the comprehensive plan. The proposed site plan conforms to all city approving excuse me, let me start over. The proposed site plan conforms to all city standards in approving the not produce the dimensional requirements of the district, and there's no indication that allowing the units to be owned would create any nuisance to life limb or property as compared to as if they were to tenants. The recommendation, should the city hearing examiner approve this conditionally, the planning department recommends conditions as listed in addition to any composed by the hearing examiner. We have a list of conditions. I would like to add one thing that is not on this list of conditions, submit that as an additional document to this record. In addition to items one through five, the city has been contacted by Grace Harbor PUD, the electrical services provider with Ocean Shores, and they would like to be added to those lists of newly created parcels being required to establish individual utilities. They would like to individual utilities as a requirement for the electrical power supply as well. And if there's no objection, I would like to add that as a, another item to the list of requirements.
Sure, Mr. Reed. And then you can, you can send me a, basically, the language that you're proposing for that?
No, and I will also send a policy sixteen dot four from a PUD under their service policies. And that would be the policy that they would have to comply with, similar to what we do water, sewer, and storm drain utilities.
And would you be able to provide that to me today? I just want to
Yes, this afternoon. I would be able to provide that this afternoon.
So at this point, I'll leave the record open till the end of the business day for that limited purpose. Any, anything else, Mr. Reed, on your presentation? Or does that conclude?
I don't think I need to add to this.
Okay, great. Thank you. I don't have a lot of questions for you. I just want to be clear. The, the, the subject lot here, it measures eighty-eight hundred square feet and would be subdivided into to forty-foot, hundred-square-foot lots. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's
There is a bit of a discrepancy, I think, in the staff report, so I just want to make sure on the first page of the staff report. Okay.
That is, that is for
Thank you. And then would both of these units and lots be accessible from Marine View Drive?
Yes, they would.
I asked that just because there's, there's a, what I have is page six in my packet. Looks like the, the lot would be subdivided, I guess, east to west, but that's not, that's not the case.
North, be subdivided north to south.
Okay. So there would be no issues with regard to emergency vehicle access to each of the units?
No, vehicle, emergency vehicle access would be from Marine View Drive.
Great, thank you. I actually don't have any other questions for you at this time. It appears fairly straightforward to me. And you mentioned you have the applicant there with you.
I do.
Let's, let's go ahead and get you sworn in, sir. You can raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in any testimony you give here today? Thank you. And can you go ahead and state and spell your name for the audio recording?
Sean Williams, S H O N W I L I A M S.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. So now is your opportunity to provide any additional information on the proposal that you would like me or members of the public to know?
No, no, Your Honor.
Have you had a chance to review the conditions that were proposed by city staff? And would you have any issue complying with those conditions?
No objections, Sean.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have for you, Mr. Williams. Do we have anyone in the room that is wishing to testify on this first matter?
This is Francis.
Oh, hold on. I'm starting with, I'm starting with the room, then I'll turn to members of the public that are on Zoom. So first, let me make sure. Is there anyone in the room, Mr. Reed, that wants to testify?
No, there is not. Thank you.
Okay. And then Francis Taylor, it looked like you had some comments.
I just have a question. I'm the property owner.
Real quick, oh, sorry, real quick. I just want to get you sworn in to make sure that if you want to turn your camera on, otherwise I can assume that you're holding up your right hand.
Yes.
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in any testimony you give here today?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And can you please state and spell your name?
My name is Francis Taylor, F R A N C I S T A Y L O R.
Thank you. Thank you, and, uh, you had some comments on this proposal?
Uh, like I say, I'm, my property is adjacent to his, and I just wanted to ensure that the property is properly surveyed. So there's no encroachment onto my, uh, piece of property. I've held this property for nineteen years and haven't really done anything with it, so. Uh, that was my only concern, that it would be properly surveyed before any construction goes on it, on his property.
Thank you, I'm gonna go ahead and see if there's any other members of the public that want to testify, and then I will. Allow the city, uh, and or applicant to, uh, provide a response to your comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, and, uh, Ms. Pierre? You're, you're still. Let's go ahead and swear you in, just to, just to be sure. Do you, uh, swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do, thank you, your honor.
Thank you.
The only comment I have regarding page six was that drawing that your honor already pointed out, the drawing. Uh, is in a, doesn't show access the way it's drawn horizontally, it should be vertical. That's the only comment I have. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And. Mr. Reed or Mr. Williams, do you have any response to the, uh, comments that were? Provided here today?
Uh, we, we did obtain a site survey, so the. At the four quarters. Of a property.
Anything from you, Mr. Reed?
Uh, no, in the city. In, in, uh. Support of the survey, the city will make sure. Um, all of the setbacks are adhered to, uh, based on a straight line that will be put up on those. That have been surveyed in, so.
And there's the, Mr. Reed, am I correct that there's going to be some other permits that are going to be required before construction begins? That the city will ensure that, you know, all the requirements are met for construction?
Uh, yes, that, those are listed in the, uh, in the comments, I'll run through those real quick, there will. Clearing and grading. Uh, permits required, uh, part of that will be the. Of a stormwater, uh, checklist, a SWP. Um, and then permits for. Or sewer and, uh, right away will also be required to be obtained to. Forward.
Great, thank you. So, um, do you have any, uh, last thoughts on behalf of the city before we turn to the final matter today, Mr. Reed?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you, so I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this second matter. Again, uh, anyone is welcome to stay, but if you have, uh, other things you need to do, I won't be offended if you leave. And then, Mr. Reed, you can just go ahead and let me know when you're ready to, uh, begin the last matter today.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, I think, uh, you wanna join me up here? We'll run through this thing, see how we do. Hey. I'm ready.
Great, thank you. Uh, last on the agenda today, we have number C U P twenty four dash oh 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 two. A request for approval of a conditional use permit. To allow for a recreational vehicle, trailer, and boat storage use. On an approximately point one six acre property located at nine eighty five Bristol Court Southeast. Which I believe, um, would be associated with an existing self-storage. Use on adjacent properties, uh, but we can get into that. I received and reviewed several exhibits in advance of this hearing. These include the staff report prepared by city staff. The application and project plans and various notice materials, and I will go ahead and admit these exhibits into the record. Should anyone else have any additional exhibits they would like admitted into the record, please let me know when it is your opportunity to testify. And I will go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Mr. Reed, you're still sworn in, so you may begin your presentation, uh, when ready.
Okay, thank you. So this is a, a proposal for, um, storage in the V. In the southeast quadrant of Ocean Shores. The applicant is. Those an equity trust, um, located at nine eighty five Bristol Court South. The project description is located in Division twenty, block two, and lot nineteen. The site ad, site address for that, nine eighty five Bristol Court Southeast, it's a lot size of. Ultimately seventy one hundred twenty five square feet. The existing zoning is B two general. Well, the land use designation, uh. Would be. Uh, general commercial, um. Oh, the, excuse me. The existing land use, they're showing as multi-family medium density, um, I don't believe. The case, um. We are actually, it's a vacant undeveloped, uh, B. Um, the surrounding zoning conditions are B two general commission, commercial. B two general commercial to the south. B two general commercial to the east and B one. Detail commercial to the west, uh, land use designations to the north, um. I'm thinking that this one got off on, on the wrong corner here, um, these land use things. Are general commercial, um. To the north's, north south. Us and then, excuse me, on the west would be, um, general commercial. The land uses to the north, this is where the multi-family got mixed in here. The existing land. North would be a multi-family structure to the south, B two general commercial, there's a. Part to the east, B two general commercial, which is storage, and to the west, B one. Commercial is a vacant undeveloped parcel. The properties in the southeast quadrant of Ocean Shores in an area comprised. Mixed uses, a conditional use permit is required for the placement of storage units in conjunction. Permitted use in the B two commercial zoning districts pursuant to Ocean Shore Municipal Code. Team thirty six oh twenty A and seventeen thirty six oh thirty E. Uh. The public hearing notices for today's hearing were sent out, um. To three hundred foot subject properties on April eleventh twenty. For, um, staff has determined that this development project is listed as a conditional use. District. Uh, identified in seventeen thirty six oh thirty E says. May be allowed and in conjunction with a permitted use. Should the committed, should the. Be granted, the city of Ocean Shores will require compliance with all building construction and fire code required. For the overall development. Attached to this report are conditional use permit application and other doc. By city staff. Um, the standard of review. Um, as out. Team fifty two oh fifty, the criteria for consideration of a conditional use. Um. Applied use is either listed as conditional or significantly similar to one or more. Uses. Uh, approval of the permit would be substantially consistent with the purpose of the district and. Provisions of the comprehensive plan and would not adversely affect other uses and properties. Vicinity. And also that granting of the permit would not produce the dimensional requirements of the. And no nuisance to life limb or property would develop. Um. Except a CBA checklist is pending, um, and this is a document that will. Be, um, submitted into record. Uh, if we can get that to be held open. Tomorrow. Um. And. Nation, should the hearing examiner approve this conditional use permit, the planning department recommends conditions as. Um, the development would meet all current building construction, zoning, and fire code. Adequate parking should be provided for Ocean Shore seventeen fifty four oh sixty. Uh, one space minimum for the on-call manager of the site facility, um, in. An approved storm drain design should be approved prior to any permits being issued, and the applicant should. Plan that includes all proposed development. Erosion control measures must be in place. The clearing, grading, or construction and control of disturbed land for blowing onto adjacent properties or. Streets. Um, so any signage must be in accordance with the current city regulations and. Located on the street rights of way or adjacent properties, uh, landscaping. Um. Shall be for Ocean Shores Municipal Code seventeen fifty one hundred and shown on the. Um. This project, um. Came to us. Um, discussions of open area storage as well as mini storage. Um. I'm not sure what the, uh, what the timeline for construction of. Physical structures would be. Um, if the applicant, uh, is planning. Longer time period, I would ask that the hearing examiner extend the length or life of this permit. Actually accommodate, um, a longer timeframe for development of the storage units. And that concludes the report.
Great, thank you, Mr. Reed, so I guess, um. I ju, I just want to begin with the. Where we at, where are we at in the environmental review of this proposal? Um, you mentioned that a CBA checklist is pending, generally. I, as part of my decision, discuss. Uh, you know, whether a project's exempt, what the, the designated official determined as far as, uh, CBA. So, and I include those as conditions, so I'm a little confused there. I, I guess this wouldn't, this, uh. The size of the structure would exceed the, the exemption for under CBA.
Well, um, at this point, we don't. Was size on the structure, uh, the CBA checklist, um. Was supposed to. Back to the city today, um. We didn't get that turned in. Um. Until after the project submittal, um, for submission of. Documents and. So we don't have. That document until tomorrow.
So we don't, so we don't actually know what the size of the proposed structure is at this point? Is that what you're?
Well, I, so. This, this project came. And was, uh, slated for a conditional use permit based on my. Discussions with the applicant's contractor. And, um, and he mentioned store. It's which I indicated in an email to him would require a conditional use permit. This time, the applicant is, and I'll let her speak for herself, um, in just a minute here, but it's my. Think that they want to start out with just open yard storage, which would not require a. Would not require a conditional use permit at this time. And. Well, in the event that, um. The market, uh, favors the. The storage units. Uh, we went ahead and conducted or are conducting. Um, conditional use, uh, permit application.
Okay, so. We, we might be a little bit premature here on the, on this application, but real quickly, I'm a little bit confused about, um. The city code, uh, as it pertains to permitted and conditional uses in this district, maybe you can shed some light. Um, I'm looking at, uh, seventeen thirty six oh two oh. Which lists permitted uses in the, uh, B two zone. Um, and it's a little confusing because it lists among the permitted uses, storage, twice, actually.
Yeah, so that's what I was. That's what I was indicating that if, if the. Um, chooses to start out this project, um, with just open storage for. Trailers and the like. Then there wouldn't be a conditional use permit, um, required, but because. The applicant's contractor, um, mentioned the, um, the potential. Construction of storage units. Then, uh, that triggered, um, a conditional. Application to be turned in.
So there's a distinction, um. In your view on the conditional use because it's. It lists, it does list storage units may be allowed as a conditional use. In conjunction with the permitted use, I guess what would be the primary use then would be my question, um. Of this property. Because I believe the storage unit would have to be. In conjunction with a, a use that's permitted outright.
In the interim. Yeah, so the. In, in the interim, um, the beginning use would be open storage would. Require the conditional use. And then they want to have the option of building store. It's, uh, going forward.
I guess, well, and then, you know. I'm a little, I guess, concerned that there's no, you know, actual. Project plans or anything associated with this, it, it seems to me to be a bit premature, but maybe we can. Hear from the applicant on this, um, and there's, I've. I guess, what is the? Also, the, um. Is it a two-year window for beginning construction on a conditional use permit? I didn't even.
Uh, it's, it's a one-year window, but you have in some cases, um. Added an additional year for the conditional use.
All right, well, let's, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant, uh, I have. Some questions here, if we can go ahead and get you sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
Yes, I do.
And can you please, uh, state and spell your name for the record?
To. O S T A M E R R A. R O S.
I'm sorry, oh. I think the video froze there for me for a second. Can you spell your last name again?
R O S E.
Thank you, Ms. Rose, can you, uh? I guess. Provide some information on what it is I'm reviewing here today, I'm, I'm a bit confused on that. What, what is the proposal?
Well. I have, uh, I own the road south storage, which is. You can see on the. Oh, the, the survey, the engineers report. And also the lot nineteen, and what I'm, there. Were, um. Uh. Working on. In the interim to store, uh, RVs, I have RVs on, on my. But to store RVs, boats. Et cetera, in the interim here. And within the next couple of years to, uh, add on to. Um, that's, uh. That will, you know, that's. The pro, you know, my property there. The other properties, but it's, it's to connect, it's like, uh, in the interim, I'd like to, uh. To do that, we are. Why, uh, we're trying to figure, uh, get this approved is because we're going to have to, uh. Needs to be. Clear, I mean, uh, it's clear, but it. Uh. I'm not really quite sure what that, the.
So, so if I'm understanding. I just want to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, you're. Wh- wh- what you're seeking to do right now is to be able to store. Recreational vehicles, boats, trailers on this property at. Uh, uh, open air storage, is that what you're looking for? And potentially to. To build storage units in the future?
For now, yes.
So, Mr. Reed is.
In the future, yes, so.
Is, Mr. Reed, is a conditional use permit required for what the applicant is proposing to do at the property at this time?
Uh, not in the interim. And that's, that was, that was. Is I had discussions with their contractor and he was talking storage units. Uh, with an interim of storage, um, but didn't give me a clear timeframe.
So we, we. I guess I'm confused, do we have a proposal? For storage units that needs a conditional use permit that I'm reviewing today?
Well. What it would be would be expansion of the development that is on lot twenty, uh, at some point. Teen with this interim time period being open air, um, open air storage, which would not. Use.
But you, you didn't, you don't need approval from me for this interim use? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, that's, that, the, um. And, and I say they, um, they're. Or, um, when he was discussing the project with me, said that they were going. That they were going to be potentially or wanting to build storage units, and so that. For a conditional use permit. And, uh. Um, I was not directly involved.
So, him, him.
Seeing this in the middle. And so I missed that there was a structure being proposed.
I guess, uh, am, am I wrong in that that proposal is a, it's a premature for me, I could, I don't. I don't want to rule on a conditional use permit on just something that's conceptual. And it, it hasn't been, you know, there's no project plans, we don't know the size of the. Potential building, when it's going to be done, you know, and the condit, conditional use permit, if I were to grant it. It seems like it may expire before there's any groundwork here. It seems like it may expire before there's any groundwork here. Yeah, if you can enlighten me, I, I.
What is the absolute fact, like, well, the timeframe, at the timeframe, your honor, is that what you're asking?
I, I guess, yeah.
For the storage units themselves.
For the actual storage unit, is this, I mean, it seems to me like this is something that can be. Brought up later when it's a little more developed, it seems like there's not really concrete plans for the storage units, I don't, I. I guess I'm confused as to why I need to address that today.
To, to be honest, you're. This process got farther along into the planning department uh. Than I would have. Before. We saw that there was two, two phases to the development. And if you're not able to rule without a, without a full proposal.
I just don't. You can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, I just don't see the need to do that at this time, if. The, it seems like what the, the applicant wants to do with the property is allowed outright. In your view. And that there may be at some future point. Plans to develop the property with self-storage units, but I, I don't think that needs to be addressed now, but I, you can correct me, I.
No, no, I, I would agree with that and um had storage units not in the original. Proposing man during the clearing permit app. And, you know, I probably wouldn't have um required that they make the application for a conditional use. The contractor used the term. Storage units, which triggers uh a conditional use in this particular. Farther into. During the supplemental process and. Back. Um, things had changed a little bit in that we weren't actually going to be looked at, but. In the future.
Is, uh, I guess, let's, let's. I guess I just want to, let, let's hear from the applicant, is that? Am I understanding correctly that? What you're wishing to do with the property right now is just the open air storage use? And potentially at some future date, maybe developing it, but I, you know, it seems to me that. You can apply for a conditional use permit at that time, uh.
Is that what needs to be done? Okay.
But I'm just trying to get some clarity.
Yeah, he's looking for. Supposing to do on the interim would not require. Um, would market conditions drive your project if um? The units, I mean, if all your other units are, are full and you have a, a.
Yeah.
Faster?
Yes.
Understanding was, was it was going to open up with open air and then develop the project. You know, into a whole-blown. Uh, storage units.
Let's, let's go ahead and we'll give you some time to think about what I'm asking here, and let's turn to the. See if there's any members of the public that want to provide comments at this time, and then we'll, we'll circle back um. Uh, is there anyone in the room before I turn to uh Ms. Pierre? It looks like she wants to give a comment.
Nobody in the room, your honor.
Thank you, Ms. Pierre, I'm going to say you're, you're still under oath, so. Go ahead. Oh, uh, I can't hear you, are you, you're muted.
Thank you, thank you, uh, Mr. Sorter. My main concern, uh, you've also already addressed for this project as well, and that is. What is the underlying permitted use? That would support the conditional use. For the storage units. In previous applications that were similar to the current one before us. An auspice. Or some other. You know, that's listed in section, uh, hold on one second. Yeah, in, in seventeen thirty-six oh one, oh, oh, I'm in the wrong. This is a B two zone, I believe. Um, the permitted uses. My, my, my comment is. What is the underlying permitted use that supports the conditional use for storage units? That's not clear to me. So that, that's all I.
Anything else, okay.
No, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierre. And then did Francis Taylor want to provide any comments on this? Last proposal?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you. All right, so uh, I guess I'm going to come back to. Mr. Reed and Ms. Rose. Um, I guess. Uh, Ms. Pierre provided the comment and I'm still a little bit unclear. Um, if. If you want me to proceed on, on what I have, I will. Um, but. Just, just let me know.
And in past um, conditional use permit applications for um. Since we've always had a site plan that showed the uh, the structure occupation of the. Um, in this case, we do not have um, a defined parcel. If. To grant an application or, or if you were to grant a conditional use permit for this parcel. The city would require that it would adhere to all setbacks. And uh. Building, fire, uh, as it would any other structure. Uh. I'm not sure. Um, and, and then if the applicant decides. To exercise their rights of that permit, then it would expire um after a two-year period.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess what, you know. You're asking me to approve is the use, um, I mentioned I have some concerns about. Where this is in the environmental review. And the information I have on that, um. The information as to any specific plans for the property. Um, and then um, also what the primary use. That this storage unit use would be associated with. Um. With those concerns in, in mind. Um, I guess I just want to know from the applicant if, you know, you want me to proceed on. Ruling on this application? If you want to supplement the record or um. You also have the option of withdrawing the application and reapplying.
What it's saying, go ahead and approve this, is that, or, well, if.
I'm, I'm not stating how I would rule, you know.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying, yeah. To, oh, to proceed forward, then it would be uh, uh. I'm asking for what I'm, the un, that, the conditional permit, correct?
That's what's before me. It, it, it sounds to me like the, the what you want to do with the property now, according to Mr. Reed, would be allowed outright, you don't need any. Approval from me, uh, the, what Mr. Reed states is a conditional use, the storage unit. A development with an actual unit. Uh, Mr. Reed asserts would require approval of a conditional use permit from me. I've stated some concerns about. What I have in the record to make that determination. And so I want, I guess, to know. Whether you want me to proceed with making a determination on what I have, if you'd like to supplement the record. Uh, with more information. Or if you would, you know, you also have the option of just withdrawing your application and reapplying when you have more concrete plans. But I will.
Go ahead.
I, I will proceed as you wish, I, I, I'm not stating. How I'm going to rule one way or another, but if you want me to proceed with what you have or with something. Uh, that you can supplement. I will do so, or you can withdraw your application, I've, I've stated my concerns.
So if. You propose storage units and supplement this with a plan to show the store. On it, and we supply this, the uh. The comments. Keep a checklist. Then, then that would give the hearing examiner a full picture of. Check and he could. Uh, potentially. Grant you a conditional use permit to develop. Under those conditions, um, you would have a timeframe of um, potential. Two years to exercise that, that permit. And uh, or. You could withdraw the application now and reapply. When you decide you do want. Units. And, and I'm okay either way, we can. We can.
Uh. I would like uh, uh, to go ahead with that. It takes a while to plan, so I want to know what is that, is if that makes sense.
I can leave. I can leave the record open. Um, if you want to submit additional materials, do you have uh? Uh, do you know how much time you would need?
Yes, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, I. I'd like to uh, have some uh. Be able to add. Store. Or within the years, so it's just going to take some planning here.
So she would like to pers. Um. With um, with the consideration. Um. Would you require a site plan and a C P A then to uh make your? Uh, review complete?
I mean, I don't know if I'm going to need more information than that to approve, but um, if you want to submit additional. Exhibits, including the environmental review documents, I'm saying I can leave the record open. For basically as long as you want to, with, you know, within reason. To allow you to supplement the record. And then, I may determine at that time that that's still not enough, and which, in which case I would deny. I'm not stating how I'd rule, I don't know, I have to review everything when it's submitted. So. If you want me to rule on this, I can, and I can leave the record open, I guess, is what I'm, what I'm saying, and how long would you need to? Supply any additional information that you would like me to review?
Yeah, let's, let's leave the record open for. If we could, and uh, and that'll give me time to get the uh, any comments that might come. From uh, the Department of Ecology or other agencies on the C P A checklist.
How long did you want? I'm sorry, Mr. Reed.
Two weeks.
And then it looked like, Ms. Pierre, I'm going to allow you, it's a little bit unorthodox, but I'm going to allow you to. Chime in if you want, it looked like you, you raised your hand, just because.
Well, I just, thank you, your honor, I, I just wanted to make sure that the, that any supplemental documents that come in are available to the public and that. Uh, I would like to receive notice, but uh, when they're there, so I can review them, but also uh, it should be made available to, to the public. In the file pro area of the city's documents.
Any issue with that, Mr. Reed?
No, we'd be happy to do that, thank you, Vida.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and, and let me know if this is correct, what I'm. What you're proposing is to leave the record open for two additional weeks. That would allow you to supply any additional information on the environmental review. And it would allow the applicant to also submit any additional information that they uh. Would like me to uh, look at before issuing a decision. Is that correct, two weeks?
That is correct.
Okay, so that would be. Uh, what is it? Close the business May eighth. And then um. To ensure that the public has adequate time to review those additional documents. I will leave the record open for one additional week. Um, so that members of the public can provide comments after the record is complete. And um, like with our other matter, I will give. An additional couple of days for the city or applicant to respond to any public comments, so that would be. Um, May eighth, close the business for the city and applicant to submit any additional materials. Uh, May fifteenth, at the close of business, uh, for any comments. From the public on those materials, and then close the business, May seventeenth. To allow the city and applicant to provide any response to public comments, does that sound? Um, doable for uh, the applicant and the city?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, and then do we have um? Any last thoughts on behalf of the city or the applicant before I adjourn to this uh, last matter? With the record being left open, as I stated.
Uh, no, I don't have any additional comments, your honor.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you all uh, for uh, being here today and participating in these hearings. Um, as I mentioned, the record will be left open as stated on this matter and the first matter, and I hope you all have a pleasant day. Thank you.
Thank you, your honor.
Thank you.